All right, like to call our regular board meeting to order. Like all stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for all our visitors, make sure that you signed in at the little powder there. For Donna, please, and clerk, please call the roll.
Morevka.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Sluse.
Here.
Parker. Ham.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
All right, in your packet, we had a few board meeting minutes. First, the regular board meeting from January 25, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to that? If not, a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Morevka. Jones.
Yes.
Morevka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Ham.
Present.
And Bowden.
Yes.
Next, we have minutes from our January 12 special board meeting. Any additions or corrections to that? So a motion to accept those?
Motion.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Ham. Jones.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Morevka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
And Bowden.
Yes.
And lastly, we have a special board meeting on January 21, 2021. Any additions or corrections to that? If not, a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Sluse, second by trustee Jones. Sluse.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Morevka.
Present.
Ham.
Yes.
And Bowden.
Yes.
Next on the agendas are accounts payable and payroll. Payrolls pay period ending 1/23/21 for $46,006, 1147. Accounts payable, general fund $32,012, 43. Capital improvements funds $3,000 for a total of $35,012, 43. Are there any questions on any of the bills? If not, only a motion to pay the bills.
Motion. Second.
Been moved by trustee Morevka, second by trustee Sluse. Morevka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. And Bowden. Yes. Next, public comments. So if you're not on the agenda in business, anybody here like to speak?
Yeah. John Maxman, a couple of things. First, Mr. March, been a while since we've been able to be in person. I wanted to thank you for your mayor's minutes.
Speak up a little bit.
I wanted to thank you for your mayor's minutes. I believe it has probably made this board one of the most transparent in town. It's a breath of fresh air to get those updates and very much appreciated. There's a lot of rumor mills that go around on different topics and wanted to throw out a question and a suggestion to you guys. Question is on the truck stop. There's the talk of the downtown revitalization and money from Aqua being used for that. And I know that there was a good chunk of money that was earmarked to the truck stop. Are we spending the money in two different places? Is the truck stop dead? What can you tell the community on that?
So the money that is going to be spent on the downtown revitalization is going to be, we're going to borrow the money from ourselves. So from the proceeds of the Aqua fund, we're going to use that money to move ahead with the downtown revitalization and repaying ourselves with business development district funds and TIF funds. So our plan is that that'll just provide the seed money, but we're not gonna, that money's just not going to be spent and never come back to us. The truck stop, I mean, that money's still earmarked for road improvements and to purchase that land out there, but it's, it's being held up right now by the IDOT approval for those road improvements. And also, we still have not completed the easement purchases that we need out there.
So one comment I'll make on the truck stop, I don't want to take up a whole bunch of time. And then the other, I wanted to bring up a suggestion, a concern that I wanted to bring up on the truck stop that had been on my mind for a while and I wanted to bring it to you guys. I remember being at a presentation where you, where there was discussion about amount of revenue that was anticipated based on fuel sales. Something that I would just like you guys to think about as planning goes forward is a lot of trucking companies have contracts with big brands like Pilot, Loves, Petro. When you go through truck stops or areas that are quote unquote an off-brand, you don't see fuel sales. They're there just to park. And so as that planning goes forward, you just might want to be aware of those anticipated fuel sales may not be what you might expect them if Mr. Patel does not bring in one of those brands that you see a lot of trucking companies have major contracts with. If it's a mom and pop shop, you're just, you're not going to get the buyers because the drivers on the road don't have contract to buy there. The other thing and suggestion I wanted to bring you guys, I heard that there was some, let's call it a tax on utilities going through. One of the things I'm aware of is in different villages, permit fees, one of them being for security systems. In order to have a security system in your home, like let's say in Tinley Park, you pay the village a fee to have a security system in your home, and that helps pay for false alarms and so on and so forth, right? If that's not something that the village has thought of or considered, it might be a possibility for some additional income for the village here. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you guys. Okay, Angie, do you want to give us an update on that?
Sure. So I have Tracy, Angie from Ashla. It's been a while since I've been able to see you guys in person. I have Tracy. Tracy, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Can you hear her okay? Yeah. So I, I can do some, some updates overall. And then Tracy is our engineering manager and she'll give us updates on engineering in the construction of the project. So first of all, I just wanted to say it is kind of main break season right now, as you can see outside, with the cold weather. Main breaks do occur a little bit more often sometimes. I think that it's, it's hit or miss. Some years aren't as bad as others, but sometimes the cold weather does trigger some main breaks. So, you know, we're, there was a main break out front and then they are putting in a valve, as you can see down here over the tracks. So they're out there working on that now. And then the second thing was the newsletter. Did you receive the newsletter at the village hall? Okay. So we recently sent out our quarterly newsletter. So just hope everybody's seen that, received it and read it. Good information in there, so. That's all I have. I'm going to turn it over to Tracy.
Jay, hi everyone. Just give you a update on projects going on within the village. We did get started on the Corning Avenue water main drilling underneath the railroad. Couple of weeks ago, we started the preliminary work and they actually started boring last week. This week, we have suspended work due to the cold temperatures. We are planning on picking right back up next week to finish that bore out. I would anticipate that the actual bore would be done at the end of next week and then we've got the connections to make. Couple services to tie on. So that, that will still be ongoing here in the next month, month and a half. I have no other updates on projects. We still have not heard anything back from EPA on a recommendation made for the source switch. We still have a couple of months there left to hear something back from them. We did get some of the pipe loaded out that was sitting down at the end of Power Street that was left over from the interconnect project. So we're starting to get most of that cleaned up. There is still some material sitting down there that we will be using to make the interconnects once we get the approval to do so. So that's all I've got. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Anything?
No.
All right.
Over the next couple of weeks, I will be sending out a letter to, to all customers summarizing some of that and then reminding customers how to sign up for SWF reach if they have not already done so. Because that is a way they can get text messages, emails and voicemails in the event of a main break or in the event, anything, you know, going on. We don't use it really unless, you know, we need to for a main break and such, it's just a really good means of communication. So I will be sending that out again over the next couple of weeks, so.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I have an Aquila question.
Sure.
Last week, my granddaughter, five, spent the night and we were having breakfast and she took a drink of water. She goes, oh, this tastes like swimming pool water. And I've had several neighbors around me, I don't know, several months ago saying that. Is that going to go away or is there a reason for it?
Um, I will have to actually, Tracy, are you going to speak?
Um, I wouldn't, I haven't heard of any, you know, there hasn't been any breaks or we haven't chlorinated any new mains or anything in the area. Are you close to one of the towers?
Yeah, the one over by Cleveland Steel.
I haven't heard of any operational changes that we've done. We can look into that.
Yeah, and this is the first I've heard about it too. So we haven't received any other calls, but I can definitely check into it and then.
I brought it up a couple of months ago.
Okay.
A couple of my neighbors had mentioned it.
Okay.
And I don't notice it myself, but it was totally unsolicited with a five-year-old.
Sure, sure. Sure. Okay.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Any other public comment? Not moving on to reports, engineer report. Troy, what do you got for us?
Yes, I have an update for the I-57 Manhattan Road widening project. So we did receive IDOT comments back finally. Thanks to the mayor and Amy, I think you guys' pressure really got them to respond rather quickly for them. So the good news is it hit a lot of little comments, but nothing major, no major scope changes. So we're working on changes now in the next week or two. We're hoping we can get it back submitted to IDOT and Will County because they had some comments as well. So hopefully if we get it back in a couple of weeks, you know, hoping they could, if anybody has a couple more minor comments, or maybe they'll be good, but usually there's still a couple trickletted, so getting closer.
Good. So will this be their final comments? And then once we agree on whatever design is, we'll be able to go?
Yeah, we don't know. So we'll, we'll do everything they say, but you never know if you still did it. I mean, I ask questions, of course, to try to get as much clarification before I submit it. But sometimes it goes on for a couple more rounds of comments.
Okay.
So then once they're good with it, we'll have to figure out bidding and everything before we get the official IDOT approval and bond and everything. But it's getting closer to them approving.
They tend not to move the goalpost on there or you can't really?
Things happen before, but this is the fourth, I think the fourth review, so. I would hope not for anything major.
Thanks.
You, Will County tried to move the goalpost on us, which we weren't anticipating, where they tried to expand the scope of our project beyond the project limits. And we kind of pushed back on that and they were receptive to that and they said, okay, we'll remove that comment. So, you know, we just kind of go back and forth.
Okay, any other questions for Troy? All right, thanks Troy.
Yep.
Old business, non-new business. That brings us to the fence variance application. Mr. and Mrs. Horlacher, 532 Meadow Lane, privacy fence on corner lot approaching 15 feet and the required 30-foot set, side setback. This was on the agenda last time. We had kind of technical difficulties with our remote audio call, so I invited Mr. Horlacher to come here and get the presentation. So if you want to go ahead and.
Yeah.
Give us what you got.
Thank you. I did send an email to all the trustees. If you have a chance to read it for the background, I won't read it again for the sake of redundancy. Then I'll just go with what I've written here instead. Good evening. I'm here to request a fence variance on the property located at 532 Meadow Lane. In a nutshell, the fence permit was applied for and granted in October and materials were ordered based upon the approved drawing. Due to COVID delays, the materials did not come in until December. At this time, the installer asked us to find out what the setback rules were from the sidewalk so he could begin installation. We were informed at this time, when we contacted the village, that an error was made by the person who granted the permit and that it couldn't be done the way it was drawn. I had a long conversation with Mayor March and asked for his recommendation to amend the drawing and to obtain a variance. The drawing was amended to reflect his recommendations and we are requesting the variance based upon the new drawing, amending the distance from 30 feet down to 15 feet. Additionally, I did take the time to measure it out to stake out the proposed area where it would be in the yard if anybody had a chance to draw it by. That was good. If not, I also measured the distance from the sidewalk and from the street. The proposed fence would be 18 feet off the sidewalk and 33 feet off of the street. And the village confirmed at the last meeting that there would be no sightline issues caused by the fence, correct? I have provided a PowerPoint that shows photos of the proposed area and eight separate examples of fences on corner lots in the area of varying materials. Three of them are aluminum, three are vinyl and two of wood, but all have a much larger footprint than the one we are requesting. If you want to look through the PowerPoint up there, it's just different pictures of the addresses in question. This is Meadow Lane. That's where we're requesting it. It's kind of hard to see the stakes on there, but if you just kind of thumb through it, I can give you.
Here, if you want to take this and you can.
Sure.
You can go through the presentation as you would like it.
Sure. Not for technically sound.
Just hit the arrow.
I'll give you my best. Can I advance it with an arrow?
Yeah, just the arrow, just hit the arrow.
All right, the stakes right there show where the fence would be. It's actually inside, it's inside the tree line and it's also, it ends up right at the end of the hedges that border the neighbor's driveway behind it. So there really wouldn't be any issues with the neighbor having sight getting out of the driveway because they're 33 feet extra all the way to the street. So there's no issue there. This is just a view from the side to show where the hedges go. And it's in, again, it's inside that tree and it's 33 feet from the roadway to the end of the fence. Directly across the street is 533 Meadow Lane. That's one of the aluminum fences. As you can see from the thing that their fence runs along, whoops. Now I'm double clicking. Runs along, is very, is closer to the street. It's a much larger footprint. It's also closer to the sidewalk. Mini Tree Lane, another one, another example of an aluminum fence. It's a corner lot. That one is actually about, I believe it's about six feet from the sidewalk and they have hedges in front of it. Of course, we intend to put hedges in front of the fence too to landscape, make it look nice. So that's just something down the road, can't do it right now. Another corner lot, 1044 Louise. That one runs about a foot off the sidewalk, all the way along there up into the neighbor's yard right there. 1021 Bounty Lane runs along the side of the house, very similar to the, what I'm requesting and runs up along the side. It's again, closer to the sidewalk and closer to the street than what I am requesting. 500 Locust runs exactly along the side, is considerably closer. All of these are end lots that I've put in here just for reference. 501 Amsterdam, that one actually runs all the way into the front yard of the place and is a corner lot. And that's where the road splits in a funny manner, so. 501 Oak Street, same thing, wood fence, vinyl fence on some of the others. Closer to the sidewalk, closer to the street. 430 Rathgie, the corner Rathgie and Gene. This is almost very similar to what we're requesting because it's a corner lot and it has a house behind it, very similar positioning to what we're looking at. That one runs all the way along the roadway. It's much closer. It runs up against the driveway of the neighbor to it and all of that is there. That's just all the examples that I've provided for that purpose.
Thank you.
Think back.
In closing, I just wanted to say my conversation with the mayor was intended to help find an amicable solution to a problem that was created due to an error by the village. And I believe that what we came up with is an amicable solution. The variance would not be precedent setting, as evidenced by the examples provided in the PowerPoint. I'm not asking for something that create a hazard or a nuisance of any kind. I'm not asking for something special that is unique to the area. I'm asking for your help in correcting the error by approving the solution that was the result of a discussion with the mayor that was entered into in good faith. I'm asking you to do what's right. Thank you. Any questions?
Any comments from the trustees, questions? Yeah, so anybody want to? So what is that? What, we're not saying you can't build the fence. We're just talking about the south side of the house. So if you just took that fence and took it right off your back corner of your house, there's no dispute at all, right? So what are the, the extra 15 feet that you're getting? Why is that so significant?
Well, it was an extra 30 feet initially. And the way the house is positioned, it sits.
I was, I was at your facility. I was at your house. I looked at your strings and stuff.
Okay, so you've seen the back lot and you've seen how that is kind of pretty tight with the fence. The side yard would just give an additional area to play, an additional. Eventually, there's going to be kids there at some point. There's going to be my grandchildren. Right now, I don't have any grandchildren, but someday soon, there probably will be.
Yeah.
They want the fence for safety, they want it for security and they want it for privacy. And if they have it run up along that side there, it gives them at least enough yard to have the children play. They have 150-pound Saint Bernard, he's 10 months old. He's probably going to get bigger than that. It's best for pedestrians, it's also best for the dog if he can be contained in the yard at that point.
You said they, who's they?
My daughter and her fiance.
Okay. Okay, so is the fence for you or is it for your daughter? I'm confused.
It's for my daughter and her fiance. They live in the house. We have a vested interest.
Oh, okay. Okay.
My wife is not good at public speaking, so you're in.
Very few people are.
I'm not either. So the 15 feet essentially gives you enough of a yard to do something with because you, you know, the backyard pitches downward.
Yeah.
The entire, if you're standing at the backyard where the little patio is, that used to be a, apparently used to be a three-season room and a tree fell on it, so now it's just concrete. To the left of that is all stone and day lilies at this point and it all pitches downward right now. So it's not really a yard that can be utilized for anything other than to mow it, you know, to do something. On the side of the yard, if you want kids to be able to play or something like that, you have the opportunity because it's flat and usable.
For the swing spread out.
You know, I, I actually live directly behind Jason and Tina on Louise. They bought this house with their daughter and their daughter's living there. I can tell you from my own personal experience, you know, they've moved to town. Tina's mother has just moved to town. They have two daughters that are, are going to be living in town. They're vested in the community. I, I see the way they take care of their home. I mean, I'm, I'm here to personally vouch that they're not, I mean, nobody wants to do something to their yard to make it look poor and tacky. I mean, these guys are coming to you in good faith, just looking to do what's right. And he hasn't even brought up, I know, again, we're neighbors, the financial burden he's looking at taking on the chin as it is. And I listened to the board meeting from last month and I heard you guys say that there's no obligation for hardship. I mean, we're all community members. Let's not, let's not worry so much about what we have to do, but what we can do for each other. I mean, that's. And I, I will add that, you know, again, I, I don't think it's any secret. I involve myself in a lot of different, I've lived here my whole life. I'm invested, I love this town. I did request a FOIA from, from Donna after the last board meeting and requested the last five to 10 years of fence variance approvals. And there was concern in the last board meeting that you guys didn't want to set precedence. Precedence has already been set. He's asking for much less than what city members here have already approved. I, as a community member, I'd like to call on you guys to do what's right as well.
Ironically, two of my examples were granted variances by some city members of the board.
Any other questions? Okay, or a motion?
I'll motion it, saying yes, 15-foot variance should be allowed.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved by trustee Morevka, second by trustee Sluse. Morevka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Jones.
No.
Ham. I'll go yes. And Bowden.
No.
Is that, that was three yeses?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, moving on, new business registration, C Patel Subway. Are you here?
Yes, sir.
Come up in the podium and introduce yourself, tell us what you got planned.
Well, just live by myself. I've been doing food QSR business for a little over 15 years. I also own Dunkin' Donuts and in surrounding towns here, Beecher, South Village, Hammond, Indiana. Subway, I am purchasing from Adam Baumgartner, along with the one in Beecher as well. That was up and running already, it's been about three and a half weeks. And this one, we're planning to open, not, not this one, say with the following Wednesday. Today, we had our Will County Health Inspection, we passed it. We're ready to go on after that. I mean, any questions? I'll open it to you guys.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You're open about 80 hours a week.
Uh huh.
You're only going to have one employee.
One at, at the moment. That's going to be working, he's going to be the partner. Well, not a partner, but he's my main guy that I'm, I'm buying this off. I'm a Dunkin' Donuts guy. I'm, I'm, you know, but all my relatives and all that, we, we were, we've been growing up with Subway in the family owning. So I know the ins and outs of Subway. But we will be hiring, as we speak, we're hiring. I talked to a young lady at the bank. What was her name, Penny? Yeah, so she's, she's, she's informing me she'll help out any way we can. We're going to put up signs for hiring.
So you do put up heaven more than.
Oh, yeah, of course, yes. I wish. Oh, yeah, the guy will, he'll, he'll, he won't last long if he's the only one working there.
Did you have a question, sir?
No, he answered the question I had about the health department and I'm sure you won't open until you get your franchise. You won't be able to open until you get your franchise secured, so.
Yeah, so we're right now, we're, we're in the middle of it. Because of pandemic, they're allowing us to kind of take over under Adam's name until the process, we're in the middle of everything, the transfer itself from the, from the brand, from the corporate office. Whereas far as he's paying transfer fees, as far along we are, he's going to pay transfer fees and they're expediting the whole process because of the time we're in. So that should be fairly quickly. So, that should be fairly quickly. Um, uh, yeah, that's about it. I tried to get a Dunkin' in here, but, uh, they shut me down.
We'll, we'll talk. We'll talk.
What I was thinking is, uh, I don't know, uh, the one in, um, Monine, the gas station, the BP gas station, I think it is.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's a company from Chicago. Their, their name is Chicagoland Commissary. So, they own the whole track, all the way up, about to Kankakee.
Oh.
Yeah, so, I tried to go.
Look out on fifty. I said, you look out on fifty, about fifty?
Where?
That's, I fifty-seven. I was going to say, if you look out on fifty to get a spot, never mind.
If you tell me, if there's a lot of traffic, then yeah, I mean, we'll go for it. Submit a site, and it's up to the brand. Uh, if it falls under their, um, SDA, then they will not, they'll shut us down.
All right. Um, any other questions about the Subway? If not, I'm going to take a motion to approve the license?
Motion.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Ham, second by trustee Sluse.
Ham.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Maravka.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
Great, welcome.
Thank you. I'm happy to join the Peatone family.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
For reopening.
Thank you.
That's great.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So, item C is executive session, discuss real estate, uh, entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll motion it.
Second.
Moved by trustee Maravka, second by trustee Sluse.
Maravka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Yes.
Please forgive me.
No, no, no. I said it. You didn't hear me.
Oh, okay.